I have the intention of making this thirty-five on the United States of America to the public which will say that one nation under God can be visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here for session Golden's City Council for July eight, nineteen, twenty twenty-one. So would you like to call the rule?
Andy?
Yep.
Phil?
Yes.
Lauren?
That's just not...
Lauren?
George.
Mike? Mylin?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Ellie?
Here.
And Darley?
Here.
Thank you. We have a full council, that's great. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but we do need a motion now to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this council meeting and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is presentations and we have the Goldendale Chamber represented here with a Community Days review. Would you like to start? It was a good job.
Well, it came together.
Yep.
It did, it came together. We were really happy. We think we saw about two thousand people on East Main Street. We had thirty-four vendors. Two no-shows is only what we had. We had them pay a little deposit and gave it back to them. And I checked in with all the vendors, they were really happy. We had a lot of comments from vendors and from visitors telling us that they liked the they liked the Community Day piece of it on East Main so that they could visit the car show and straight out. So they walked a straight line. And so that was, that was really good. I have a, I have one thing I wanted to just read to you. This is from Charis at KBH. She just said, "I just wanted to say again what a huge success I thought Community Days was. Great work to everyone that was involved in the planning and preparation. I know how much time and energy goes into events and just want you to know how much you're all appreciated." So they had a marvelous time. And I wanted to thank the city for helping the chamber with our first time doing anything like this. We do the Home and Garden Show. We've done a lot of events, but we haven't done Community Days in this way. So I'm appreciative of all the help. Also Allen's Building Center who built the stage that Len Pratt could do his, have his band. And that worked out really well. And James Ogden who volunteered and stood on the street and played his accordion and at the end of the day. One of the things that, also the General Store, I can't forget them, who made their parking lot available for the co-op, the creative co-op. And all in front of their store. We also had chamber directors who volunteered and chamber volunteers that did a lot of hard work, setting up tents and that sort of a thing. That was great. They, there are a couple, I would call them improvement opportunities that I see. And that would be, we didn't have enough hand washing stations. There was one. People were eating ribs and things like that, you know? They, they needed to wash their hands and they couldn't.
Good idea.
So that, and I think, I don't know how, you know, vendors were, the hospital was giving away water. The chamber gave away water, it was really hot. And people, you know, people were, some were overheated. And so more water and more hand washing stations. Other than that, I thought it went really well. And I didn't think anybody stepped on anybody else. Like there was music during the day and then we all cleared out. And then the Hot Rods had music and the Dirty Cowgirl had music and we were able to publicize it. And I, I think that went well. So that's, that's all I've got. I, I felt like it went really well.
That's good.
People were happy, smiling faces.
Any comments or questions? In council?
Let us Lauren if he's got any. Let us Lauren if he has any.
Lauren, did you have any comment?
So, can you?
Lauren, did you have any comment?
I made a comment, please mayor?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys so much, man. That turned out just a really great Community Days. Like, I love Community Days. It's one of my favorite things about living here. I've loved it since I was a little kid and I still love it. That was one of my favorites just because we missed out on it last year. And man, when you miss out on something you like that much, when you get to have it back, you really appreciate it. And so yeah, I really appreciate it. Can't thank you enough, yeah.
Everybody had fun.
Yes.
Yeah, I was a little tired these days. You think?
Thank you.
The next presentation is by Eric Smith from RH2 on our wastewater treatment plant facilities plan amended and the next steps. Eric, welcome.
Hey, thank you for having me. Does everybody have a copy of this in the council packet? And I don't know if you want to try to present it as well. I have a, have you tried presenting through a Zoom meeting before?
No.
Yeah, it might be, oh, we could give it a shot here real quick. If you just plug this in. Okay, I'll try not to do the virus here. It might help to show it on the screen. Oh, you may not have a free. I think you are all filled up here, so we'll just do it with the paper copies. I don't want to pull anything out of there, so. Okay. So thanks for having me. Yeah, I'm with RH2 Engineering. We were brought on by Carley near in 2019 to do an updated amendment to your general sewer plant and wastewater treatment plant facility plan. That plan was done in 2012. And since that time, there were some issues that had arisen at the treatment plant. And so basically, we had kind of a focused look at what those issues were with the goal of recommending solutions. The primary issue was large bubbles that had developed underneath the liner of one of your lagoons, the sledge holding lagoon. So that's a pretty, that's the most emergent issue we're going to talk about. Grit accumulation in your aeration basins was something that had been observed since the previous plan had been done. And so we took a serious look at that. And then also improvements to your aeration basin, your aeration system and also how that system is operated. And then as part of the plan, we looked at capacity, took an update to look at capacity as well and looked at future growth. And in general, capacity isn't a limiting issue for your treatment plan. It's more these more immediate deficiencies that need to be rectified. So on the next slide, there's just a quick overview aerial of where the treatment plan is out to the southwest of town, if you're not familiar. I have just a real simple flow schematic here just to identify kind of the areas that we're talking about. So the green arrows would be the influent sanitary sewer that comes in from town. It goes through a headworks facility. The goal there is to remove screenings and grit, sandy material, things like that prior to the wastewater going into the aeration basins. The aeration basins is where the biological treatment occurs. And out of that, the mixed liquor, we call it, flows into clarifiers. Any solids are settled out of it and then from there, the effluent flows out, is disinfected and flows out to the river. And then solids are removed from the aeration basins. And how it's currently configured is they go into a big sludge storage lagoon. And so if you can see in that photo there, that sludge storage lagoon, you can actually see one of the bubbles in the corner, corner of that lagoon. So what we're talking about here, the areas are generally the headworks building, the aeration basins and the sludge storage lagoons, kind of the areas of interest here. So since the sludge storage lagoon is kind of the most emergent issue, I put that one first here. There's two aerials, top and bottom of this lagoon. One was taken in, these are just off Google Earth, one was in around the twenty-eighteen timeframe where you see, the lagoon has a water cap, but there's a number of bubbles and some of those are quite large. For reference, I think this is a, and is this thirteen, fifteen acre lagoon?
Yeah, about twelve, thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen acres. So these are really big bubbles. And what they're likely being caused by is that when you, when you build a lagoon like this, you need to overexcavate and take out any plant material or kind of biological material beneath the lagoon so that as that breaks down, if it releases methane, biogas, it's not going to get trapped under a liner and create a bubble. And that's less likely what's occurring here is there's a significant buildup of gas here under these, under the lagoon. And that's, you're going to pose the risk of those bubbles rupturing, the liner rupturing at some point. And then you would have an unmitigated discharge of that water cap out of your sludge to, to the ground. And that would be, that would be a problem. So when we did this plan, one of our interim recommendations was try to remove that water cap that's over the stored sludge in the lagoon so that if a bubble was ruptured, you'd have a lot less water that's going to leak out. And so that lower photo there is actually more recent. And that's, you can actually see that kind of the brown areas are more dried sludge. The water's been largely removed from this lagoon, but the, the bubbles still exist. And they're, the plant, they're doing a good job kind of creatively operating more of just a corner of the lagoon to keep that risk low that you would have a, a major failure and a major discharge of a bunch of water. But this is just an interim solution. This was not a, by any means, a permanent solution. And feel free to stop me if you have questions along the way. I'm kind of just going to go right through, go ahead.
Where's the excess fluid? I mean, calling it, or does it produce fluid?
So the operators, between the two photos, the excess fluid between the two photos? You guys were pumped it out, is that correct?
We pumped it out, yeah. And there's not a significant amount coming back in?
So there is, there's a continual flow of sludge that comes in. The solids settle out and what they're doing is kind of pumping out a corner of sort of the lagoon. So they kind of let the solids settle out and try to pull the, what we call the supernate and the liquid on top, trying to continually pull that out of there instead of, originally, the way the lagoon was operated is that all flowed in there, the sludge settled out, and the only way water would leave it is through evaporation. So you always had a significant water cap and that would rise and fall with precipitation in the winter time and that sort of thing. So right now, that's, they're, they're having to actively pump out the, the liquid, but it's, they're continually putting sludge into this lagoon. They have no other option of where they can discharge sludge to, if that makes sense. And the most recent development here was in the last few weeks. A couple of the bubbles flattened out or?
Yeah, the main bubble in the center, we had a hundred and fifteen degree day.
And it?
The next morning, we discovered that it was flat.
Okay. So it's possible that one has actually now ruptured. That's kind of a likely scenario. So we've had an initial discussion with ecology and we're going to continue to see, since we don't have a, the permanent solution in place here, which is what I'm getting to, but some initial interim things that they'll want from us. But in general, by reducing that water cap, I think they alleviated a, potentially a large discharge here. Ecology hasn't been too open arms about it as of yet, so. So as part of the plan, going to the next slide here, we looked at what the, for a plan of your size, what are all the typical solids handling options? And I won't go through all the alternatives that we looked at, but our recommended solution for you is to go to some sort of mechanized unit, a piece of equipment in which the sludge is pumped directly to, that will separate the water and the sludge in a piece of equipment and the water will be sent back to the plant, not over to a lagoon. It just goes back to the influent. And the sludge at that point is a lot denser and it can be put like into a truck. And what we'd like to do with it is during the summer months, dry it on a asphalt pad. And that's, that's done at a lot of plants in Eastern Washington. It's been proven to work well, greatly reduces the amount of volume that you have to deal with to haul offsite. And then the issue is just in the winter months, your pad has to be large enough that you can store that, store that sludge because it's not going to dry over the winter. You just have to store it and in the summer, you spread it, let it dry. And that process is, well, it's a state Washington rule process. It creates a class B biosolids that can be beneficially reused. It can be taken to agricultural fields for use basically as, as a composting type material. So this is a pretty common process. It's, there is some labor involved with spreading the solids and then piling them up to dry. But relative to other, other options that we saw, we thought this was going to be the lowest capital cost and definitely the lowest lifecycle cost when you take into account operations of other, other processes.
So how big is the screw front, how big is that?
It's not very large. It's probably a ten-foot long unit, eight-foot long unit, two, three feet wide.
So would that be one of the most expensive for repairing this or is it?
Most expensive piece of equipment?
Yes, right.
Relative to just other solids handling pieces of equipment or just?
Yeah, just whatever.
Yeah, so I, screw presses in there with, the other types of solids handling equipment that you would see would be a centrifuge, a belt press, a screw press, they're all generally in the same ballpark. The nice thing about a screw press is it's, we piloted a couple. We had vendors come out and bring their trailer mounted units and pump your sludge into it and see how they operated. And the good thing about the screw presses that we piloted is that they didn't require any preconditioning of the sludge. You didn't have to have any preceding piece of equipment, which a centrifuge you likely would. You'd have to thicken it up further, a belt press as well. So that's the benefit of a screw press here is you just take your sludge and pump it right into this and it'll thicken it up and actually de-water it to a, to a tank matter basically. But they are not cheap, you know? Pausing, I thought I had it on silent here. That's my wife. Putting the kids to bed. So this is probably going to be the most expensive piece of equipment that you guys have it out of the plant. You know, it's probably around a $300,000 piece of equipment. They're, they're quite expensive. But they're largely automated, they're designed to run 24/7 without having operator attendance. So you basically just set, they spin at a very low rate. You continually pump to them, they continually fill a truck. At the rate that you'd be filling a truck, you know, you'd probably fill a truck every couple of days. So the operator would just need to move the truck over and dump it onto a, onto your asphalt pad there, your drying pad that would be located next to the, next to the plant, so. So anyways, that, that was, there's one last picture here of just a cashmere. One of my other plants up in North Central Washington has drying pads. So this is just, they, they produce a lot more solids than you guys. But you can kind of see in the photo there, in the front is all the solids they, they cold deck all winter long in store. Kind of in the back edge is the real thin solids that they spread out and dry. And on the hot days like today, you know, they'll dry their solids in a day or two, pile them up and continually move it out and pile them up. So it's, it works quite well when you have ninety-degree days and a little bit of air movement, so. So anyways, that's the recommended process for solids handling at the plant. Grit removal is the other issue that you have going on. So there's, in the influent, you'll have sandy, heavy particle, inert particles that need to be removed because they'll settle out in basins and, which is what's happening in your plant. You have grit that settles down into the aeration basins because it's not removed from the influent. And so typically, a plant that has this level of grit coming in would have some sort of automated way to pump the grit out and de-water it and keep it out of the process. Because as it deposits in aeration basins, it causes all sorts of problems with the aeration equipment. You only have a single aeration basin, so now removing the grit after it's deposited is difficult and you don't want to do that very often. So we, we recommend it, I just have a real simple schematic here. You already have a little grit settling basin that's manually pumped out. We would recommend that that's slightly more automated with a pump and another piece of equipment. And it's honestly a piece of equipment that's similar in function to a screw press on the solids handling side. It's a, it's a screw that the grit slurry is pumped into and then is de-watered basically. So the grit is conveyed up and out of the water and it just goes into a garbage can and gets hauled offsite, so. Again, largely an automated project process that would, there's a photo here on the next page of what a grit classifier looks like. So they're, they're not real large, but to try to keep the grit from depositing in other, in other areas of the plant. I had a real basic site plan here that I snipped out of the facility plan that showed, so the issue here is that freezing temperatures in the winter, both a grit classifier and any sort of de-watering equipment needs to be in a building. And so that definitely drives the cost of this project. There isn't a free space in another building out at the plant. So we did budget for including these pieces of equipment in the building and the electrical gear associated with them. So likely, it's in blue there, kind of between the headworks and the control building. And then you pave an asphalt pad out there adjacent to the plant to, to serve as a drying pad. The last major issue that we looked at was the existing aeration system. So there's a photo of your aeration basin. How your aeration system works is it's a, has floating laterals of pipe. You can see that in the photo there. And the aeration system is, they're diffusers, so you're, they're diffusing small bubbles of air into the aeration basins that the biomass used to oxidize that carbon basically in your, in your wastewater. So these have been somewhat problematic. They've also been aggravated by the grit that's depositing in the basins. They're aging. It's time to replace the diffuser system. And as part of that, we'd recommend that you look at adding an anoxic zone to your aeration basin. So the next slide shows to the existing and proposed aeration basin. The existing basin is completely aerobic, so it's just got diffusers across the entire thing. What we would recommend is a portion of the basin that is not aerobic, it has no air in it. And we would, that'd be termed anoxic in the, in the wastewater industry. Our sludge that's returned to the front of the basin would go through this anoxic zone. And the point of doing that, and the point of doing that as part of this aeration project is that you guys have to adjust your pH up with chemical dosing for your effluent. And if you add an anoxic zone, you can denitrify, I won't get into the, the process specifics, but you can denitrify the nitrate that comes back around. You can save energy and you can reduce your ongoing chemical consumption that you would have to use to balance pH. So it's, it's a kind of a win-win. And if you're doing an aeration project anyways, it's as simple as adding a baffle and some mixers, low bubble air, large bubble air mixers into that zone. So I think it's a, it's a good time to consider doing that. So that was our recommendation that we had for the aeration basins. So the probable cost, this is obviously the, the most interested, or the item that people are probably most interested in. So I'll just jump to the project total and what we estimated for the funding package was four million dollars. The total construction cost was, with contingency, was right around three million dollars. The majority of this is the solids handling improvements, the equipment, the asphalt pad, the building, the electrical and everything associated with that. So this is a very, it adds up. This is a sizable project for you guys and for your plant. And then to go into the funding package, we have to estimate at least kind of a conventional proportion of engineering, construction administration. So that was done, fifteen and fifteen percent of construction total to get to a project total. So this is the high level, level cost that we came out of the facility plan for this work. At the end of this, we got this facility done, planned, done, approved in 2019 so that you guys could apply for a loan through Ecology, through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The main thing they look at there, so there's, there's a combination of loan and grant that you can get, low interest loans and grant money. Your sewer rates are relatively low compared to municipalities of your size. And so you don't qualify for the hardship, is the term Ecology uses or funded agencies use. And kind of the minimum threshold for hardship is a sewer rate, a monthly rate that is two percent of your median, median annual income. So I think the city's median income is around, in the low forty thousand dollar range per year. That would equate to a sewer bill of, two percent of that would equate to a sewer bill of sixty to sixty-five dollars a month. And I think your rates right now are in the mid-forties, if I remember right.
Thirty-six fifty.
Thirty-six fifty, below forty. So you've got, done a very good job of keeping your rates low and that's obviously a tribute to, you know, keeping your operating expenses low. But even with this, taking this all as a loan, it wasn't going to kick you up over two percent threshold. So you didn't score overly well relative to other applications. You ranked seventy-seven out of a hundred and twenty applications. So Ecology's loan package was basically, essentially all loan, a twenty-year loan at a one-point-two percent interest rate. They did give you a little bit of, very small percentage of forgivable principal loan is their term that they use, but it's essentially a grant. And that's, that was only two hundred thousand, the rest was all loan. And so since then, 2020, obviously the pandemic occurred, but I know Larry and we, we tried to find other funding sources to either supplement this with grant money. I've had a couple of conversations with Ecology. They've basically said you can continually reapply and I've had clients that have reapplied. But you're still kind of, until your rates get up to that hardship level, you're just not going to score that well with. Most of my clients' rates are fifty dollars minimum and that's usually the big cities. And I have clients all the way up to a hundred dollars a month in sewer bills. So it's really hard to compete with, with those clients for grant money. So at this point, basically Ecology's kind of offered you this loan and they're at the point now, I think there's a little, little chart here, the schedule of, the city needs to decide whether or not to take this loan and, and move forward with the project. Ecology is, I think, they're very, they, they see the, the sludge lagoon as a very emergent issue and they, they really want that resolved as soon as possible. So I think they are quite motivated to get you guys to take this loan and help you along with this. But at the same time, that doesn't preclude you from continuing to find other funding sources, grant money to offset this. But they are basically kind of coming up on the deadline of, we need their, either you guys to either accept this loan or cut it loose. And I think they, you know, my recommendation from the engineering side is to accept this loan and, and move forward with taking care of these problems. But I do understand the rate impacts and, and, you know, the financial considerations that go, go along with that. So I wanted to give you, I do have a quick slide here. I think the second to last one is just kind of the major requirements related to taking a loan like this. And the near term to our, in order to accept the loan, you need to have a written opinion of your legal counsel saying that you guys can accept this loan. And then the other, other thing is the governing body, the council, to either pass an ordinance or a resolution saying we have agreed, we have voted and agreed to take this loan package. And then at that point, you can sign, Larry or whoever the authorized agent is, can sign for the loan and begin the structuring, the agreement with Ecology. Kind of the major qual, the major requirements that go along with this funding package are that you have to go through a qualifications-based consultant selection. So you do have to evaluate engineers and decide who's going to do. So you do have to evaluate engineers and decide who's going to do, design the project for you. You have to go through a competitive bidding to get a contractor on board to do this. And then there's other requirements that come with state funding. And that's utilizing American iron and steel, paying prevailing wages, kind of the, generally the typical things that go along with public works contracting. But there is also an environmental review and some fairly simple things like an energy audit, asset management program that would have to be shown that you would, would do as part of this. So it is, it's a big undertaking for a city of your size, I recognize that. But you do have some, some fairly emergent issues at the treatment plant. So I guess in summary, I, I wanted to give the presentation more so that we, I could explain what the drivers were for during the facility plan, what the issues are, what our recommendations were for the improvements, and then what, what you've been offered now in terms of financing by Ecology. I think Ecology is, they've actually kind of extended the period. They were, were actually requiring everybody to sign on, take their loan, take the loan offer or disregard it by June 30th. So they've given you kind of a grace period here to make this decision. And I think you guys need to, you know, you can review the facility plan. But I think likely at the next council meeting, it would be prudent to decide if you're going to take this and let Ecology know, essentially. And then in the interim, I think we need to meet with Ecology, myself and Larry and Andy to talk about an interim solution potentially related to lagoon, and if a bubble has popped there and see what Ecology is going to require of us. And then a couple of other things that I've kind of already mentioned is, you know, the city can continue to pursue grant money here. This doesn't preclude you from taking grant money from other sources. But in general, if you do this, you know, I think they intend for the design to be completed within a year or so and then move it towards construction. And generally, the longest these time window that you see on these, these packages are five years. And at the date of commissioning, loan repayment begins. So, and then just while I add you, I just want to bring this one other issue up that wasn't brought up as part of the facility plan amendment because it's not currently in your permit, but it may be something that you hear about. And it's related to effluent temperature. So there is a temperature requirement on the Little Clickatatt River. Right now, you have a, a temperature limit of 21 and a half degrees, I think on a monthly average. And you guys are, your, your operators have a couple of different tools to try to meet that. But in the future, in a future permit cycle, that's likely to get ratcheted down. The total daily maximum load study that was done for the Little Clickatatt River required going down to 18.3 degrees, which would be a very significant jump and likely impossible for your treatment plant to meet. And so it's something that's going to come up in your next permit as likely having some sort of, putting together some sort of implementation strategy towards either meeting this or showing that it cannot be met with known and reasonable technologies. So it's, it's not a, it's not something that's required of you right now, but your permit, as, as I understand with Ecology, is being drafted. So it will come up and it's, more than anything, I just want to, I know it's kind of an issue that's been discussed in, at Ecology at different levels and elsewhere. And it's, it will show up at some point for you. But that, that wasn't included in the facility plan because it's not on your permit as of yet. So, sorry, that probably went a little longer than I anticipated. But any questions?
Yes, I, the latest of this, in this package, I, there is a grant money for solid waste treatment plants. I know we're, we're looking into that a little bit with the Senator's office.
Yes, we did submit a request to the Senator Murray's office.
So we still have maybe a potential chance of getting some?
We do, we do have a potential chance of adding grant funds to this if we're going to follow up with the infrastructure package. One thing that Eric didn't mention was we did take some time and attempt to make an application through, through CDVG. Because our, our community, Golden Dale, is in that low to moderate income level. Over 50, over 51% of our population is in the low to moderate income. So we're eligible that way. But again, CDVG will look at that hard, that financial hardship number. And if you're not over the 2% of low to moderate income, hell am I, then they're not even going to take a look at you.
Right, right.
But we, so we have, we did, we did attempt to, to get grant funds already. I don't know, Senator Murray's office may have a better scenario on how we can be part of that package.
Right.
Need to follow up on that.
So if we got the loan from the Department of Ecology, do we have to get the full $4 million? Or can we just, the amount, just to get things started, then hopefully we can get that grant? I mean, we're.
So it is possible that they will, you can take less, yeah, if that, if that's what you're asking. I haven't ever done that, but I have confirmed that that is a possibility. So your loan offer is for the full amount. I don't know what the steps would be necessarily, that you would show that we, you know, one potential approach would be that the, the lagoon, the sledge lagoon is the most emergent issue. We want to tackle that, right? But we don't need the full amount to do that. So that, that is a potential approach.
Right. Well, I was thinking if we do that, and then if we did not get the grant money, then we'd come back and then get the rest of the $4 million on two separate loans, or can we do?
No, I think you have to, so you would not be able to get the, the balance, the remainder, without going through the application process again. So you would, you're signing on to the loan that you're going to accept for this funding cycle and they wouldn't earmark the remainder for you.
If you got the four, the full $4 million loan and then you got grants later, couldn't you just put that grant money towards the loan?
That's, that's my understanding. You can use that to offset the loan amount. Yeah, so, yeah, I talked specifically to Ecology. I even had it, I, I've always actually had, when they've signed on, when a client has signed on to take the loan, they've actually already had their grant money. But I've confirmed with Ecology that if you come up into grant money after you've accepted the loan, that's fine. So there, yeah, there's other funding sources. There's also opportunities potentially with the PUD. There's energy savings that is associated with this. It wouldn't necessarily be a ton of money, but you could definitely show some energy savings that potentially gets the money that way. The other kind of standard funding avenue for communities your size is USDA Rural Development. And they will offer loan and grant packages as well. They typically look at hardship as well, though. And there's quite a few extra administrative and other requirements that go along with those. So I typically recommend, Ecology is looking to fund water quality projects and they really are looking for, to make your project successful. So there's some benefits that I know it doesn't necessarily amount to actual grant money, but there's, there are some benefits to going through Ecology on these things. So if you can, that's one of, always kind of my first preference, but obviously getting as much loan as you can is important to you. And I, we did just a quick rate calculation back of the napkin. And based on the number of ERUs you had, a $4 million loan would equate to like a $10 or $11 a month increase in rates over what, what you have right now, if you couldn't, if, if, if you needed to raise rates to cover the whole amount.
For 20 years.
For, for 20 years, for, on a 20-year loan.
That's right.
So on the design, would you say, well, we could build the design in phases to do like the sledge first, then the, what is it, the aeration and all those transport language? You know, and phases and to also include the water cooling system into like a end phase? Even though it's not funded, but included in this design to?
It's possible. The, the, the temperature issue, the reason I brought that up is that there isn't a, right now, a clear-cut way to meet the ultimate low limit. And so what Ecology is going to require is some sort of analysis to be done that shows what are your options and what can you do for mitigation?
Well, I know that, you know, that, well, they're, they're doing their best to meet the current temperatures. You know, and they're already having to mitigate some of that to lower the temperatures to meet that higher rate. So, I mean, even to meet this one or to meet a lower one?
So it is possible that you can amend your loan package to, if you have the money to cover additional work such as?
Or not even, not even amend the loan, leave the loan alone, but in the design include that portion as a future?
As a future phase?
Phase, but just design it now and.
Yeah, that, they would still make you amend your loan package since the loan would be covering the design as well. They, they're letting you design what was approved in the facility plan. So if you did a level of analysis and determined what mitigation you were going to do for temperature and that was approved by Ecology, then they could probably amend the loan agreement to say, if you want to design those improvements now, you could if you had the money to. So, but in general, yes, you could, you could phase the design. But there is a ultimate, you know, kind of a five-year schedule on the loan package. So probably the most common approach would be to do the design and, and bid it out over multiple phases or multiple construction contracts would be, would be one option.
Eric?
Yeah?
I know it's already a struggle to hit the 21.5 degree. Always a challenge. We've had Ecology and with quite a demand on that. Going to 18.3 is probably going to require chilling or something.
Yeah.
A lot of ways to do it, but it's, it's going to be quite an obstacle for us, I think.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, without having done any analysis, that would be the only way it could be done is actually to chill the water. And I don't think that's in anyone's interest because of the amount of energy that that would require to cool the water. But.
And the cost.
Yeah, and cost. And it's just, I would say that is not a feasible or reasonable technology for any community, but a definitely a community of your size. So that's, we would need to look at what other mitigation can be done. So there's different things that could be done that may not get you down to 18.3, you know, the letter of the law. But if you do some sort of offsetting mitigation like habitat, streambank habitat, shading projects, more of that, indirectly discharging the water to the river so it's not just outfalling through a channel or something into the river, but maybe more of an infiltrative type approach. There, there's a number of things that can be looked at. And I think that's, I, I'm hopeful that's how your permit will read and it won't read that your limit is 18.3, figure it out. I don't, and I don't think that's.
No, they've been approved.
Yeah, they're, they're really trying to facilitate you guys.
They have, yes.
Yeah, so.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes, Lauren.
Yeah, I, I guess, to me, when I hear that there's three major grant funding sources that we could apply for and potentially get grant funds for, but our, our sewer rates aren't high enough to be eligible or competitive for that. I think that we need to redouble our efforts on our grant applications and the city council needs to give a hard look at increasing our sewer rates instead of kicking the can down the, down the street further and getting a loan and doing this all under a loan. It's going to end up costing our residents more to take out a loan and pay it back than just make an adjustment upfront, which is going to be widely, obviously unpopular. But it makes more sense to make that increase now, be more competitive for the grant funds, bring in more grant funds, maybe work with some of our local legislators for some capital funds and take another look at this over the next year before we just take the $4 million loan on.
Thanks, Lauren. I think you understand it really well. Larry, what would you say? We, I don't think we need a decision tonight. We need to work towards a decision next council meeting, isn't it? Or do you?
Well, I would say that we need to, Department of Ecology has made the offer and they're waiting on us to choose.
Exactly.
To take the offer or not take the offer.
So I would say, because, yeah, that's looking at maybe next council meeting to make the decision?
Sure. We don't expect you to make the decision tonight. Because we need to have the proper paperwork before you.
Yeah.
Just a presentation, but it's a really good one.
Oh, right. So, yeah, well, so I'll, I'll make a motion, but first I'll, I'll say that it's, it's a fantastic job what our sewer department, Andy, has done to mitigate the issue. I know about a year ago or so when we toured, those bubbles were pretty significant and it's a significant issue. And if it has popped and if it is, if we already have a leak, that's going to become a bigger issue faster than what we can handle building this over five years. And I don't know how Ecology is going to react to it. Like you mentioned, you guys are going to have to have meetings over it. But I think what they've already done to mitigate that and remove the water is huge and they should be applauded for that. And so I would think my motion on this would be to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for accepting the loan and having that for next council meeting and for going to legal council review. And just doing it as a ordinance. And then we can look at, in the time being also, have in front of us a second ordinance as to what Lauren was saying is possible rate hikes and maybe seeing, I'm not, I'm, I'm okay on math, but not that good. Seeing, seeing what the cost to our citizens would be on a loan versus a rate increase now and having that comparison of numbers. I don't know who would be the expert on seeing that, but I would like to see, you know, as, as Lauren mentioned, if it would cost more over time on a loan or if an increased hike would be less. I'd like to see those numbers, how they compare to make a decision as to if we accept the loan next.
Right, I can get Eric to help me with those numbers.
Yeah, and I might be able, maybe, just, so if your, your current sewer rate is, you said around 36 or 37?
Right, yeah.
A month, okay.
How much is it?
The, the simple count, has it been actually raised?
It did, we did it in a three-year when Carl was here. It's been a couple of years since.
Okay.
She's thinking more like 45?
I think it's 45.
45, okay.
It's 89.15 for water and sewer combined.
Combined, okay. So, so let's say $45 a month. And, and you know to get up to that 2% threshold, you need to be at $65 a month, thereabouts. That's a, that'd be a $20 a month increase to get to the threshold that probably makes you really competitively, more competitively considered for grant money, at least through Ecology. If you were to take the loan, or the simple calculation would be, just to cover the loan, that you would need to add $10 a month to your rate. So raising your rates to make, to get you closer to that hardship level, you're probably not going to do it. You're, you're, you're basically raising your rates to just cover the loan amount.
If you're talking 20 years for to pay back $4 million, you would have to raise your rates crazy to get that money without taking a loan.
Right.
It would, it would.
Oh, you would, yeah, you upfront.
So even if we, so if we took the loan and raised that, just the $10?
It'd be $20 for the loan.
To cover, just to cover the loan, you know?
Yeah.
But nothing's. So you can't take that loan and then still put all the grants you can and just put that grant money right towards the loan and pay it down faster than 20 years, possibly.
Yeah, so right now we have a motion on the table, right? They're going to make sure we come back to that, so that's why I made.
So the motion would be to direct staff to prepare the ordinance for accepting the loan. loan and to move in forward with the design project.
I'll second that.
Counsel, there's been a motion made and seconded to direct staff.
Discussion?
Pardon me?
Just, just a little bit of discussion. I don't think it's just wiser to increase sewer rates now and address the cost now that's been a burden that's been accumulating for some time, be more competitive for grant loans and increase the percentage of grant loans that are required, pay that, the remaining amount that has to be taken out of the loan off sooner and reduce sewer rates accordingly once the issue's been addressed. But that's just, that's my opinion and I think, you know, once you accept that ecology grant loan, you're going to lose your opportunity to reapply to ecology or rural development or CPTG, if I got that acronym right, because you already have your funds, you're already set up and moving forward with the project. So I think it's, it's worth a one-year delay to reapply to ecology, increase rates, reapply to ecology, apply to the two other major grant funding sources, work with our legislators and try and have a more viscerally prudent approach to this, just putting that idea out there.
Well, my, my concern is putting this off a year is going to create more problems. We're already been kicking the can forward for a couple of years already, so I think we need to act on this now versus waiting another year.
I think, so the, the motion is just, it's not to accept it, but to draft it so that we have two more weeks to decide, to get some numbers down, to look at, is it financially responsible or do we wait a year, but at least we have that ordinance coming. So, and it gives us a deadline to say, you know, also to, to look at that and, and see what, what's going to be the best. I know, from, from my point of view, I don't know and maybe we can get Andy to let us know more information on the hassles that he's dealing with ecology, but what, to me, the urgency is huge, as in like last year or several years ago when the first bubble came up?
Well, what I tell you is that.
Andy, why don't you come up to the podium, sir?
Sure, sure. What I tell you is this, is that.
Stay close, Eric.
He's in the hot seat now.
Is we, you know, we saw that, that bubble getting bigger and that's when I called ecology, we had him come in and look at this and decide we had to do something right then. And that's when we bought a big old pump and started pumping the water off that so the whole thing could de-water and dry out. It was pretty much, I like to invite anybody who wants to come out there to, any new guys want to come out there and see the plan, we have a show before your next meeting. But anyways. Yeah, so here's, here's the deal, is, you've already said something's going on there and it's got to go away. We've got to solve this problem, one way or another. And I'm just decommissioning this basin. This, what it was going to be is a big storage lagoon that was going to be for what, 100 years? And what that meant is, it's going to be somebody else's problem somewhere further down the road. We just happen to be that guy because it's failed or something's going on, we've got to deal with it and that's us. So, ecology's going to say, something's got to happen, that thing's got to go away, which drives the need for a screw press or a belt press or something like that to deal with the sludge in another way. Right now, it's just put it in a big old bucket and leave it. But now we have to squeeze that water, get the solids out of it, haul it to the landfill or land apply them, something like that. So ecology's going to tell us to do something. They're going to, they're going to say, well, we're, and it's always in our best interest with ecology to be upfront with them and be proactive.
And I think they want action.
Yeah, so I, the money thing's, I don't, I don't, I don't know about that, but I'm just going to say, this is something that they're going to require us to deal with.
And if, if that bubble did burst, that makes it a shorter time to deal with. I'm assuming ecology's going to want action sooner?
It's not, it's not underwater, so that's the good thing. So, we have, we've been trying to get together after this latest event on July 5th, when that happened, so I called them right away and, and we've been trying to all meet together or come out there, get on the phone together or something. But like you said, that this, that whole lagoon has got to stop its current use. We've got to deal with the sludge in a different way and that's pretty expensive, so that's what we're going to have to do, so. You, you might have, there might be a few temporary things we can do for storage on-site until you come up with a final solution for this sludge, but you're going to have to do something.
And there's time needed to kind of work through those.
Yeah.
Steps, so we know we're doing what is.
Yeah, and they're, they're really good to work with, they're good folks, they're good people.
They have been, I was really delighted.
But.
They're after work with us.
The time's coming, we got to, we got to deal with it.
We'll see something move.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
You bet. So like I said, you guys want to come out there, just call up more. You can ask questions, I explain stuff.
Bring nose plugs.
Smells like money.
Thank you, Andy, very much. Appreciate all you do for us.
You bet.
Can I just ask one other?
Sure.
Quick, maybe Larry, no, or whoever. If we take the $4 million loan, would, is it true that that would make it so we wouldn't be able to get any grants after taking that loan? Would they say, oh, you took that $4 million loan, you don't need grant money now? You know what I'm saying? Because Lauren kind of brought that up on the, that's what I, that's just what I got out of what you were saying.
Well, Eric deals with this stuff all the time.
Yeah, yeah, so no, I specifically asked ecology about that and they said, no, you can continue to reapply, but if your hardship situation isn't changing, don't.
Don't expect.
Don't expect anything, so.
Uh-huh.
That doesn't preclude you from continuing to try to get money from other sources, either stimulus, infrastructure package, just a legislative appropriation is often done too. One of my plans just got a, they had a, well, they had about a half grant loan package and they began a petition to legislature and got a legislative appropriation to just cover the other half, because they're, again, their sewer rates were small community, they were already relatively high and they were going to be significantly higher with, with a loan added on, so. Not saying it's not possible. The one thing I have been hearing, but I don't know if it's necessarily true, is if an infrastructure package breaks loose, they will be looking for shovel-ready projects, you always hear that, but I don't, I don't know. So that, there is that potential as well, that if you have the sink ready.
You said the design would take about a year, correct?
I think you're supposed to have the design done within a year is the recommendation, but that, that would be a normal timeline too. This design could, is not real complicated, it could be done faster, but, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
So the project could be shovel-ready in a six-month period of time, so.
Ye- yes.
That brings the potential for infrastructure funding through the stimulus package into play if the stars align.
If the stars align, that's correct. This, this project would, could be made ready to, you know, be bid, yeah, next spring essentially, right? And there's, as, as you, one of the council members had mentioned, there is a kind of phased approach here that you could also take if you wanted to try to put together a couple of big packages to, you know, if you wanted to knock off solids handling first and something else later, so there's, there's opportunities.
So if we did.
Would we, would we be able to work with ecology on a phased approach and only borrow whatever? It takes 750,000 for a final design and then also implementing one of the temporary solutions for the sewer fund?
My understanding, discussing this with ecology, is that you have to, they will allow you to take less loan right now, but you're setting up a loan agreement for this funding cycle and they won't be earmarking additional funds for you later on, so if you take 750 right now, that, that's it, that's the package that you're getting and then you'd have to fully reapply to get the rest later. That doesn't mean that you wouldn't be able to get it. You can, there, you can reapply each October and you usually find out in the spring or late winter if you've been shortlisted. But, so you do have the opportunity to take less, but you would still have to go through the application process, I guess, to get the rest, so.
Wouldn't you say the application process would change? Right now, we have a urgent need.
Yeah.
Versus mitigating that and not having an urgent need anymore down the road. Like if we do half the project, but not the other half, which would be the sludge, dealing with the sludge and then the other half was the grid, that's not necessarily urgent.
Yeah.
You know, so if we did that half, would that kind of take us out of the running? Because, right?
I, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't necessarily think so, but it, it, you know, it depends on what, who else is applying and what other projects are out there, but in general, I don't think it, you know, the, my understanding of how they rate the amount of grant you get is really more on the hardship side and less on kind of the urgency side, so it's probably not going to necessarily shift the scales in any measurable way on grant money, would be my assumption, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion before us to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to move forward on the wastewater treatment plan. It's been proposed and discussed. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Nay.
Lauren?
Yes, Lauren?
Lauren said nay.
Okay, and Lauren is opposed. The next motion passes. I think with this in place, we'll be doing a lot of looking and discussing and working between Public Works Department with our committees to find not only this offer, but resources that we can try to develop or, or reach out for to get the funding to cover this, as well as consider what may have to happen with some of the costs that our citizens have to pay on a monthly basis. That's a part of it, it's hard to, to not, to avoid that, it's, right now, it's, it's limiting what we can do, so, and I think people will understand that side of it.
One comment, Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to, I, I will do it or else I'll work with Larry and you, Mayor. We contact Senator Murray's office and they may have a little more information now about the stimulus package.
Exactly.
And we could, you know, kind of go in there and report on that at the next, next meeting.
Okay.
And we can work together, that'll come in and whatever, we can work on that.
Mayor, and also, if we can get a follow-up, I know Andy mentioned that he's working with ecology, trying to meet with them and stuff, and if we can get a follow-up on if that happens before next council meeting, what is discovered and what is?
Sure.
What is the final say on what's going on as of the June phase?
Is that right?
The event that happened?
July.
July, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
July.
So is that something you think we can do in the next couple of weeks, Eric?
Yeah, I think, I think that's reasonable is to have a, so, we can have a call with ecology or yet this week. They were committed to doing one last week and Gabrielle said, they said they'd be available this week, so.
Okay.
We can, you, myself and Andy perhaps.
Okay. I think that will definitely help us make our minds up.
Okay.
Whether we accept or we can wait longer.
Trying to find a path and that's exactly what we need to do. Eric, we sincerely appreciate the work that's gone into this and your expertise is really impressive.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
We appreciate that.
We appreciate the help.
We'll be relying on you quite a lot, I think. Thank you. Any other things on this item? Larry, did you have any wrap-up on any more?
Yes, I, this Lauren, I'd request that we have a Public Works meeting prior to our next council meeting.
Absolutely.
After we learn more in the next week.
Absolutely. And that's agreed, we will call that. With that, we'll go on to department reports and we'll hear from our chief. Jay.
Well, I got two items. I'm sure mostly driving around Goldendale, you'll notice that sometimes during the day you'll see the school zone lights still flashing. They've been a problem issue the entire school year. Our programming that we have in the computer to put into it, to put the schedule in, is not taking. We've tried it multiple times and now the system has gone to the point where it's not going to let us turn the lights off. So that's why you continue seeing blinking and that, because the school's out. So, I've let the bus bar know because they're the ones that called and kept reminding us that it's gone, but it's, it's a problem. So we're, we're looking into IT, RadCom to try to figure this out, but also, we're also looking into replacing those. I've talked with Larry on that, so, because they are old, they are old. Then the other thing I have is, Phil had sent me information on Department of Justice grants for the body worn cameras. My administrative assistant, Maria Hutchins, is researching all that is applied to those. The cameras are not the expensive part, it's the, it's the retention of the records and the storage and the redacting hardware stuff where it gets expensive.
In the length of stretch.
This grant here, we got some time to prepare for it. She's already started the process for applying for the grant, but we got to fill in all the blanks. It's kind of a streamlined grant. It's due no later than August 31st, so we've got plenty of time, but we are working on it and I'll be reaching out to other departments that have body worn camera policies so we can take a look at what they got and make it fit to Goldendale. So that's what we're doing for right now.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Phil.
Thanks, Chief. Our fire chief, Noah Hahn, said he was working on something with the fire department and with the volunteers there, so he's not attending tonight. Larry, is there anything on Public Works or does Andy want to add anything?
Doug is on the line, let's ask him.
Okay, good. Doug?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I got a couple of things to report. One, as many of you'll notice or have noticed in the past couple of months, we've got a lot of streetlights out. We're having communication issues with those. The PUD jumped on board and helped us out and found that there were some relays that had tripped, so I'm hoping that all those issues have been resolved. Just kind of an update, we're kind of starting to do crosswalk striping to know out the lane strippers, I think somewhere around the 1st of August. We're going to, hopefully with Community Day and the 4th of July over, start getting the pop holes early next week. With the Community Day stuff and the 4th of July cleanup, things of that nature, it kind of put a little bit of a delay on us. And kind of back to the treatment plant stuff, just, I just wanted to add that with the, with the loan money that you guys were discussing and doing partials, the issue from my perspective is, as Eric had mentioned, we're still going to be dealing with temperature issues probably in the near future and if we only do half of the issues that we have right now, we're still going to have half of those issues left and the cooling issue as well, which would be fairly expensive to deal with. We'd be better off to move forward with the treatment plant issues that ecology is, is kind of pushing us to move forward on now. And I think that's about all I have and I'm going to get off the phones if anybody has any questions or anything for me, I'll answer them now.
Any questions or comments for you, Doug?
I guess, it is a good point about the temperature issue and it'd be good to know where we stand with that before we work up our final design for implementation, just so that we know where our angles are in the short term and have a design that addresses everything that's been coming up in the next couple of years, other than piecemeal.
One of, one of the things that I was thinking while you guys were discussing that is, you had discussed the rate increase as well as that loan, the rate increase, you know, happening or starting to happen immediately may help cover the cost of whatever we have to do in the forms of a chiller or getting our water cooled down and at that point, you may not have to borrow as much money and pay interest fees moving forward on that and it'll also put us in a, a better place to apply for grant money.
Kevin, have a stand up. Kevin?
Kevin?
Kevin.
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 Oh, Kevin. Yes.
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry. I know I'm way out of turn now since I'm not on the council, but I want to ask the question of the, the extra money that we're getting from the federal government, does that be applied to this?
The extra money we're getting from what?
Federal government.
The money that we're getting from the stimulus package. My understanding, the last time when I was still on the council was it was like $700,000 possible. Could that be applied to this?
Well, I have to double check with, on how the money can be used, but my understanding is it, it could be used for that purpose. And that may be an option for us to consider.
And, and I do apologize for speaking out of turn. Have a good day.
Thanks, Kevin. Nice to hear from you. Anything else? Any comments or questions on Public Works? I want to thank Andy for being here. Appreciate that very much. The experience and knowledge really adds a lot to our, our conversations. The next item is, and same for Dr. Phantom, always a good, good input. We'll go now to council business and we'll begin with committee assignments. And I want to kind of give a little bit of the background of this. We have a vacancy in budget, in the Budget Committee, the Invet Committee, and then the Public Works Committee. And this is because of the different council members that left the council for various reasons. And so we need to appoint people that have served these next five months. And I think as a suggestion, not a requirement, but a suggestion, is that we put our new council members into these slots depending on discussion and what would work best for our new council members. Maybe they don't want to do that, but we're hoping you do. But you should have the first choice of that.
I would like to do events.
Events, uh-huh.
I would also like to do events because I can't be on budget over the rest.
Or you could be on budget over ordinance. Or if Ellie was on the events, I think you're going to work together anyway. You're always involved in events.
I always am.
And you can always, these are all public meetings as well, so.
Well, then each council member can only be on two committees also. And most of us are already on.
Well, that's it. That's why the new members of the council.
Ellie, why can't she be on it?
My husband works in public works.
Yeah. So the two that are left are the Budget Committee and the Public Works Committee.
I'll take anything you put me on.
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah.
For the budget?
Sure.
And Darlene for Public Works. And all of these, Larry and I will help you everywhere possible on anything. Some of these things are really difficult to sort out, particularly Public Works. A lot of complex issues and solutions. But as a business person, I think you'll find more, more chances than we do. Thank you. And we appreciate the cooperation on these as well. Next, next item on council business will be the bid on Simco Drive crossings and the rejection of that bid and ask for Dustin Conroy to.
Uh, so we tried to bid the Simco sewer crossing project through the small works roster. And we didn't have, we had two bidders show up. Both bids were high. I wrote a letter. It was about 143% above my estimate or roughly $870 per foot of sewer pipe, which is pretty expensive. So Larry and I discussed it and decided to reject all bids. I think because it's a small works roster project, we have the opportunity to turn right back around and go talk to them, maybe see what they can do to, to make that project cheaper. And they can develop a plan and submit a proposal to us with the cost. And so that's what we're hoping for. But we had talked to four contractors and I'd actually, even the day before, I'd talked to all four, so I was kind of surprised we only received two bids. So this might be an opportunity to allow more bids also.
Hopefully. Thank you, thank you. Council, do you have any questions or comments on the rejection of these bids that were received that seem to be much higher than the engineering costs were estimated to be?
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, we do.
I still move to reject the, the bids.
I'll second.
Been moved and suggested to reject all bids for the Simco sewer crossing project regarding bid openings that were held July 13th, 2021. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Lauren. Lauren, I have you.
This is Lauren. A quick comment.
Oh, yeah.
This is the second bid we rejected recently for Public Works. You know, increased costs are common in the construction industry, delayed timelines. So, you know, we're going to see the same things for wastewater treatment plant work as well. And I just hope that as we do our construction cost estimates and engineering estimates, we're, we're taking into account this new environment that we're seeing in the, in the construction industry. It's going to take a while for those, those cost estimates to catch up, I think, but we should, we're ready for that to hit us with this wastewater treatment plan as well.
Exactly. Thanks, Lauren. Good reminder, too. The next item, and we'll call on Dustin Conroy as well for the update on the Byers Avenue project.
So the design's almost done, Byers Avenue project. We go to, probably go out for bid next week, the end of next week with our plans. But as Lauren just mentioned, the bidding environment right now is, is difficult for cities and municipalities. So we'll see how it goes.
Fear of inflation made everybody pull back a little.
Yeah, and materials in general are very difficult to get piped, especially is, is one. And so it's just difficult right now.
Thank you. That insight helps a lot. We're going to go on to a report of officers and city administrator. And Larry Bellamy has the quarterly financial statements that he'll present. Larry?
This is actually mid, second quarter, mid-year financial report. I'll give you just a brief rundown of the current revenue stream coming into the city of Goldendale. The property tax level is about right where we see it. It comes in two chunks, one in May and one in November, little pieces here and there along the way. But the majority of the money comes in May and October, so we're seeing that in line pretty much with estimates. Retail sales are at 76%. It has to do primarily to the construction projects that are going on in town, especially the, the Clickcat County Administration, New Administration Building. Utility tax numbers are, are doing a little over projection. Motor vehicle excise taxes a little bit under where we expect it to be. Motel motels are starting, motel motel taxes are beginning to recover from last year's lows in 2020. So it looks, it looks like 2021 will have a little bit of recovery in the motel motel taxes. And then water and sewer are about where, right where they should be. Water doesn't, we have a lot higher water bills, of course, as you can imagine, in July and in August and even into September. So the 45% that we see halfway through will begin to build over those next three months. And we'll, that will begin to catch up with the percentage for each quarter. On the second page, I do, did an evaluation of the expenditure side of the equation. Again, I'm looking at 50%. Most everybody's looking good in that respect, but, and actually that's about where we should be. Water O and M is a little bit high, so we're going to have to be careful on the water operation maintenance. But sewer maintenance is a little bit low, so those will tend to offset each other a little bit. And that, very important. Let's see if you have questions.
Any questions or comments, Council, for Eric?
Before we go on to that.
Sure.
Lauren did mention that he would like to have a Public Works committee meeting, and I'd like to suggest that members of that committee, which are Lauren, Andy, and Darlene, to consider seven o'clock on next Monday.
Seven o'clock, Monday, the?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Then we will have time to have a conversation with Department of Ecology. We can have some discussions about what's going on there and go over some arbitration on what we talked about tonight.
Exactly. So there'll be quite a bit going on this week getting ready for that.
Yes.
And that was the Budget Committee.
That was the Public Works Committee.
Public Works.
Oh. Yeah, I guess I won't, I won't make it.
Well, that's right. You're going to be gone.
Yeah, I'll be in.
Is there another night you could go?
Uh, I'll be back Tuesday, Tuesday night. What's going on Wednesday?
I have a meeting, I have a planning commission meeting on Wednesday. Oh, wait, that's not, oh, yeah, it is that week. Yeah, I have a planning commission meeting on the 28th.
29th?
I could do the 29th.
Is that okay with?
Darlene, are you okay with?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
Okay. Just send me an email or? I have to be back in touch with you to confirm that date.
Okay, that'll be fine.
29th.
May I have a question?
Yes.
On the, on the budget, going back to the budget really quick, for legal services with the union contract. Wondering if we can form a committee to deal with union contracts prior to sending it to attorneys. I know in other municipalities and other places of work, usually union contracts get negotiated. And when everybody gets in a fight and they can't settle things down, that's when it goes to attorneys. And as opposed to spending 82% of the budget right up front and going straight to attorneys, I think we should have a committee represented by City Council to negotiate with the union for future contracts. And then if we can figure things out in a nice friendly way, then we can involve the attorneys. But I think with the past union negotiations, it was pretty straightforward that there was no big discussion issues that could have been settled without the attorney present.
Yeah, I agree.
What you say, you're in these and they're very complex, so, but some think are simple or sometimes very complex.
I've, I've actually done it both ways. And the one we did for Public Works was quite complex. It had a lot of issues to be resolved. Police Department is going to be the one that's up this year. So we can certainly try that approach. But I appreciate the fact that if it does get to the point where we can't move any farther.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. But I think if we can do it in a, in a nice friendly way and just settle things down. And then also, I'm not sure how fast they're coming up, but if we can form the committee, maybe get some education to them, whoever's going to be a member, ahead of time to prepare them for negotiations, then that'll definitely help us out to.
We can certainly try that approach.
Try it and, and well, the thing is, we can try it. If it's not working quite right, we'll have the lawyers sort the rest of it out.
If we can resolve something, you know, then it just goes to the next step.
There's negotiation and then there's mediation and then there's arbitration.
Exactly. There's a lot to it.
Certainly try that. Now, do you want to use an existing budget? Do you want to use the existing budget committee to do that or do you want a special union?
Well, as I'm starting to do now, I'll leave that up to you guys to decide. That was just my request, but I think, you know, definitely, obviously I'd, I'd be willing to serve on that and, you know, if I need to, since it came out of my mouth first. But it could be an existing or it could be a new one, whatever, whatever the mayor decides.
So if we did the budget committee, it would be Andy and you and Dave. Does that accept more than one?
I think works.
A big headache, okay.
Why not?
Good. That's good. That is far simpler to use a standing committee to do something that that committee would normally address. So that's, that's good. We've got it done. Thank you. Really good. The next item is reports of council members. And I'm going to begin with Mylan and then go around the table.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to, I invited the Lieutenant Governor to come down to Goldendale last week. And we visited the pump storage site. Some of the people there would be from Rye Company, who's going to be doing the project, and several lobbyists from Olympia, and several of Chamber Board members. And then they, Rye gave a very good explanation and an update on the pump storage project to the Lieutenant Governor. After that, we went up to the observatory and we had lunch up there. And the mayor and the director of, of Goldendale sat down and talked to the Lieutenant Governor. And they gave a good update on what the city of Goldendale is doing and also the, the Chamber. And so anyway, thank you. It was very good. I think Lieutenant Governor was very pleased to come down. And I think it was well worthwhile for him to be here at the pump storage site and also help with the observatory. And so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I had a chance to visit with the Lieutenant Governor and he had some very, very specific, good questions on different things about our city and the things that we're working on, what the outlook looked like. It was, it was a very interesting discussion and I really enjoyed having a chance to get to know him. It's, when we have a chance to meet these state officials, it's not a political thing. It's to help them to understand what our city faces or what we're working on or obstacles we may be running into. And they very often have incredible levers to pull to help get things done. So it's, it's of value and I appreciated Mylan very much. We'll go to Mylan, uh, to Mylan, we just did Mylan. Filberto.
Um, well, like I mentioned, kudos to Public Works for working on that sewage project and keeping that system going and, and, you know, helping it along and being prepared for what's happening. And a great thanks to, I know they just kind of left the room a little bit ago, but the Chamber did an awesome job with Community Days. And I think everybody that was involved and all the businesses and, you know, it, Chamber pulled it together, but I think, again, it's, it was the whole community that, that made it happen, made it great. So, and then just a reminder, I know, I talked to Mayor and Larry last week about, you know, working on, on fire, fire safety and, and some preparedness for our community. And as more and more small communities are finding themselves in the way of the fires that are happening, just a reminder to everybody to have a plan at home for evacuations and sign up for emergency notifications for the county. And just, you know, it's not a matter of, of if, it's a matter of when a fire will hit, will hit us. And we've already had a few fires around Goldendale. had a few fires around Goldendale, so, just that.
Thanks, Phil, very much. Andy, Mayor from town.
Okay, so I got two things. I already spoke to you and Larry about this, but I believe that we need to have more information in the minutes. I think there was a lot left out from the last meeting that should have been in there, just for future references to go back to. I think it's important. Another thing is, when are we going to have a meeting with the committee for Larry's replacement, Connie's replacement, and all that?
I was thinking about the 26th of this month, next Monday at six o'clock.
Okay.
I know that Mylan, you won't be able to make it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I won't be able to make this one, but then I think you inform me on it or?
It was just beginning.
Yeah, right. And of course, I'll definitely be at the next one whenever we have it.
Very good. Ellie?
I have anything.
Okay. Dave?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I wrote mine down, because, yeah, I just want to say, the morning after the Fourth of July, July 5th, a young man approached me at my work, and he asked me if he could borrow a push broom, because him and his friends were wanting to clean up the World War II park. And, from the fireworks debris and everything. And, you know, I gave him the broom. I was impressed that someone would do that. He was probably in his mid twenties, and I gave him the broom, and he brought it back a couple hours later, and he started telling me about the group that he's with that was doing it, called the Goldendale Community Sports. And I'd never heard of them or anything, but he told me is what they do is they have a Facebook group called Goldendale Community Sports, and they organize different sport events at Econe Park or the World War II Park, just simple things like basketball games, but they want to get enough people to have a good game, you know? And they have kickball and all sorts of stuff. But I, I had a chance to have a meeting with a couple of the leaders of that group, Aaron and Austin, and they told me they have more goals, you know? They want to really get involved in the city, and they want, they told me about how much they appreciate the parks, the Econe Park and World War II Park, where they have all their activities, and they want to, you know, help out and keep stuff like that nice. That's why they did that.
That's a true policy.
It does make me feel really good, you know, that there's a next generation that is wanting to step up and take part in community things. So I want to publicly thank the Goldendale Community Sports Group for that. I'm glad to have you around here, and look forward to watching you grow and get back to the community, and I'll be here to help you out with anything you need.
Same here.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Darlene?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the city workers. They, after the Community Days was all done and stuff, they came around, and they made sure they picked up the garbage. And usually, we're having to call on Monday and go, hey, the garbage is everywhere. And I think it was Ben, isn't that who it was?
Ben.
He came around, and he picked up all the garbage and just did a great job. So I wanted to thank him for that.
That's right. Notice the efforts are really important.
Yeah, that was great.
Good. Thank you. Lauren? Lauren, do you have anything that you want to?
Uh, no report this week. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. On the mayor's side, and this relates back to what Phil talked about with fire safety, firewise, and I've been doing some research on Google and all, just looking at what firewise means and, and the different parts of that. There's a lot to it. It involves quite a bit of public education, so people understand the reason for having a firewise type approach to fire safety. It's also something the city can eventually get certification as a firewise community. And the weather and drought we're experiencing now, I think it's a good move for us to, to try to develop this as much as we can. Phil had excellent ideas, and we want him to be involved, very much so, and it's, it's something, it, it's unique. We have, how many volunteer firemen on this? I know, we have city workers that are unvolunteer. Phil is, your brother's fire chief. I don't think Lauren's on, but I think most of the others are city staff that, that have a real connection to volunteer firefighting, and it's going to be a good thing. That's why I think your expertise will do a lot to help us work our way through this. It's something that we're doing for the benefit of our own community. It's not necessarily a thing of spending a lot of money. It's possibly doing a lot of work in organizing this, this group. Community Sports will probably, hopefully, be involved and help us with, at least with public teaching and training on what's required. What, what does it mean to be firewise, or how do you fix your yard up so you don't have a, not only you're not worried about your yard, but your neighbor's not worried about it either, that type of thing. So I think it's something we can do as a community, to build our spirit as a community, to protect ourselves from something that I don't think is just a one-year problem. Things I see and read and hear, drought and high temperatures may be something that's going to be much longer term. And then we really are going to have some drastic changes. If people look at their, their trees, Goldendale has a lot of big, beautiful trees, but if you look at the top branches and the leaves, they're withered, they're still green, but they're incredibly susceptible to fire. And so we need to be incredibly careful not to do anything that would spark or set off these fields of grass. We talked about it the other day, about, we have a number of places that have grass overgrown that should have been cut, but hasn't been cut. And this is the time to do it, because if you're running a bushwhacker or a lawnmower, you hit a stone and it sparks. You've got something besides cutting weeds to deal with. You have a fire right there, and it will move very quickly. We've had a couple of instances of talking with the fire chief, of people doing things very, very busy and very concentrated on what they were doing, but the machine they were using was putting out sparks that caused quite a fire. It was outside of Goldendale, but at the same time, our fire department was called out there with Rule 7 to fight it. So we need to be really aware of our surroundings and the conditions that we're dealing with day to day. I think it'll help us all. With that, we'll go to public comments. Anyone on the line for public comments?
Well, I'm on the line, if you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. This, this is Wayne Kent, and I'm at 321 West Byers Avenue. And my questions are about three parts. They're dealing with water, the residential water situation. And I'll mention the three questions I have, and they are, what are, what is the current status of the city water supply? That'd be the first question. The second question would be, what are the impacts to the city residents of this state's recent drop, drop declaration? And the last is, what is the city's short-term and long-term plans for drought mitigation?
I might be able to answer some of those. Andy, do you think you could help me out with some of that?
Well, I can tell you that on our?
Can you go ahead and stand?
Sure. Just off the top of my head, on our spring's water, right, right now, we're about a little over 50 percent on our annual use, and we're much less than that on our bassy wells consumption. But I can tell you this, is that we had a few days about a week ago that were higher than last year. People are really using a ton of water. We had some 2.6 million gallon days, which is really crazy. It's, it's, it's really.
Probably watering lawns or?
Yeah, watering lawns. It'll, people haven't seen that water bill yet, so they'll, they'll see it. Well, Shelley knows when it'll go out. It'll, we'll see a drop off next month after they get this bill and yell at Shelley.
That's why that worked.
But our wells got a lot of capacity, and the springs are doing their annual drop off. It's, it happens every year.
Yeah, exactly.
But, and we're in good shape right now. As far as our total water consumption, we're right on track.
We have actually terrific water quality as well.
Yeah, spring water.
Really fortunate.
It's all groundwater. It's no service water. And as far as the drought stuff, I don't know.
Well, I can say on the drought stuff that, I don't know how many years ago it was, but maybe 10 years, at least 10 years ago, we were concerned about that particular issue. And we did drill a well?
Exactly.
At the Coronation Station off a pipeline road, perhaps about five miles north of town. And that really has helped us mitigate the spring source drop off in the summer.
Which is a natural drop off, yeah.
Which, it happens every year.
Yeah.
So that's why this is a good drought emergency measure that we accomplished. We do continue to watch it. I mean, we report on it every day. We check it every day. And according to Andy, we're looking pretty good as far as waters.
It's going to be big power bills this month, I'll tell you that.
Because you're going to be pumping more?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're a month ahead of last year, certainly, as far as consumption and everything else. People are really running the water on the yards. That's where a lot of it goes.
The second one was the impact of the state drought resolution. And I, I looked at some of that on the computer. A lot of it had to do with dealing with the heat, to help people to understand what heat exhaustion and heat stroke and some of those situations are. I'm not sure, in, in my estimation, the impact of the drought, we're going to be surprised at what it's doing to our agriculture, including fish. But we won't have details probably for months before it's really assessed and understood. And I'm not sure that's an adequate answer for Mr. Kent, but.
Can I just interject something?
Yes.
Okay. Given the information that you have about the, the supply and so on, I think it's probably agreed, or I think fairly assured that this drought is going to be a continuing phenomenon for us, and quite possibly going to get much worse. So our current status is going to get to be good now, but undoubtedly will not stay good. It's going to perhaps decline, I would assume, in terms of our water supplies. So something to be done to deal with that, would that be water restrictions? Is that one option? As far as, if you only have so much water, you have people consuming it, you have to do something right. Restrictions would be a possibility?
I, I think we'll probably begin with an assessment of what the impact is. I'm talking about doing this quickly, not years from now. But the impact of the drought now and long-term, and what plans we can set to reduce the amount of water used, not only by the public, but the city. PSE as well has, uses water, but these things, we need to look at very carefully so that we can deal with it, but in an efficient and as possible way as we can. But we really do, I think, you're right, we have to be ready for a much longer drought than what we have right now, as well as attempt. So.
Is that, is what you're saying, Mayor, a part of the ongoing discussion on the current table, as far as the council's concerned, in terms of how to deal with the water, because you have a lot of issues on your plate for sure?
Right. And I think council members may want to add what you feel we need to be doing. It's a very early stage as far as having a group that's actually working on it. We're discussing it with a number of different people, everything from fire departments, energy producers, a number of things, to understand all the impact of this drought and the high weather. So anybody have anything you want to add to?
When was the last time we had water restrictions?
When I was a kid, they used to do it, different streets, your address is what they fell on, and what night you could water.
Something, maybe.
Ninety-six, long time.
What's that?
Looking like 96, somewhere in there.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe, maybe something we should look into next summer, like, maybe not, you know, I don't know. Maybe odd addresses, water on certain nights and even, I mean, just to.
Approach.
Yeah.
As a point of, sort of thing. But we'll be working, especially close with our, with our treatment plan and with the assessment they have of the strength and use of our water, such as Andy's already given us. That will help us have a much clearer picture of either what we're going into or what we need to expect as far as water shortages, or how we deal with these shortages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the question.
Thank you. This is Lauren. Thanks for your comments, Mr. Kent. I think it's really important to get kind of a look at that, because all these things tie together in terms of our spring water usage, what are the Clickcat River temperatures, water usage domestically to get that process and put it in the little Clickcat. And these water balances then may end up being part of the solution to achieving the new temperature requirement if we end up with one. So hopefully, we're all looking at that holistically and thinking about how, one, action by the city impacts those things. So thanks again, Mr. Kent.
You're welcome. Thanks, Lauren. Good. Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, just kicked it to me, Kevin again, sorry. It should probably be studied. A study should be happening, not a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan, but a very long-term plan. And it should probably come down to Click, Clickcat County helping us out. The envi, I know the environmental guy from Clickcat County would be more than happy to assist us in this project.
It's something that a partnership will need to be there. Every community in the, in the county will need to work with the county itself on how we deal with situations like this, heat, fire, and water. Thanks, Kevin. Anyone else for public comment? Anybody on mute that wants to comment? If not, need a motion to close our city council meeting for July 19, 2021. Do we have a motion?
It's moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.